Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the September 17th regular board meeting. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. At this time, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Chambers, will you call roll, please?
Sir.
Mr. Eastwood.
Here.
Ms. Pavlik.
Here.
Mr. Skidmore.
Here.
Mr. Ross.
Here.
Ms. Parkers.
Here.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the August 20th regular board meeting and the minutes from the September 4th work session.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, changes? Hearing none?
Ms. Parkers.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood.
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik.
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore.
Aye.
Thank you.
Are there any additions, removals, or modifications to this evening's board agenda? No?
I'd make a motion, we accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik.
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Ms. Parkers.
Aye.
Thank you.
I don't have this on as a discussion item tonight, but I want to make sure I just quickly briefly said a few words in regards to the state report card. We did send out a parent communication, as well as a communication to all of our staff last week when the report card was released. This is the first year that the state has had an overall grade for the report card. And I just want to take this opportunity to congratulate and thank foremost all of our students because they're the ones that are taking the tests, our staff, and then the collaboration we have with our parents and community. It truly is that collaborative effort that makes schools great. It all starts from home. So I think this is really a moment for all of our community to celebrate how we're performing as a district because a great district is a reflection of a great community. At the same time, I do want to caution that the report card is just one measurement of our students' success. There have been a lot of changes and adjustments over the course of the past five or six years down at the Ohio Department of Education in terms of testing, as well as in terms of the report card. And I know that it has been a little bit of a roller coaster ride for many districts as all these changes have occurred. We do take the state report card data seriously. We do strive to do well. We do use it as an overall measure for our district, but again, it's just one piece. You take multiple tests to show if you're successful. I would encourage people to look at our quality profile. It outlines other programming that's not listed in the state report card. If you look at any of the research, it will show you that strong extracurricular, strong music, strong arts programs all increase student success, and that's not reflected in the state report card, as well as how we do to prepare our students. And college and career readiness, I think is a big term you hear nowadays, but I think it's even beyond that. It's working with students to teach them the soft skills to prepare them for life, and that's something that I feel we do very successfully here in the district. Up first, we have Root Middle School for our first building presentation of this school year.
For those who don't know, I'm Brian Farson. I'm the principal at Root. The program I'm going to talk to you about tonight is MTSS. So education is full of acronyms, so I want to make sure everybody knows what it stands for. And I'm not going to tell you that I had to ask earlier in the day because when you hear an acronym, you just take it as gospel and move forward. So it's multi-tiered system of support. And basically what this is doing is it's trying to help our kids, especially our at-risk kids, kind of focus on their education, stay in the classroom where they're going to learn, and at the same time, giving them that extra support through mentoring. So we're going to talk a little bit about this program and all the levels that it addresses. So the focus of our MTSS program is for the sixth and seventh grade, seventh and eighth grade students. Each grade is unique on how it transforms, and we're going to talk about each of those grades as we kind of go through the program here. How you get recommended for MTSS is it's staff recommendations. We have had parent referrals, and sometimes we even have self-referrals by students. So it's all encompassing. If a kid needs assistance, they get involved in this program, and then we get the adults involved in trying to help that kid better their educational experience. So other parts of the focus is, most of the referrals are based on, there's major factors that focus in on this. School, so if their grades are poor, maybe their attendance is poor, things are going on at home. Academics is a huge one because we want them to be ready, especially as they're progressing through the middle school. We want them to be on track and ready to be successful when they get here to the high school. So that's a major focus. Other things with middle school kids, there's those social interactions. And the last one makes me chuckle a little bit, and hygiene is a focus sometimes of kids when they get involved in this program. Students can graduate from the program, so it's not like once you're in, you're always in. If they start to accomplish the necessary goals, we call it by graduating them out, and then the kids have accomplished everything they need to, and they become self-sufficient, which is the goal of every educator, and I know every parent out there that your kids will pull this off. So first off, sixth grade. So the person who handles sixth grade is Melanie Kandosta. She's our, one of our physical education teachers at Root. And what she's doing is, she's taking all of those kids who are transitioning in from fifth to sixth grade. It's a very difficult transition. We have three feeder schools, plus those kids could move in, or they could be from St. Francis. So sometimes that transition's a little hard. There's a different academic need that they have, so we try to get them early and try to get things addressed and right the ship so they can go ahead and have a successful experience while they're here at Root. So that's one of the major things that we're focusing on is that, just that transition. So it's a very busy time of year. We get a lot of referrals at this point. Kids, you know, don't understand the homework process, maybe their organization isn't where it needs to be, and we try to get those kids on the right track. So what we'll do is, once they get into MTSS, we track them throughout the year. And just to give you some basic stats, last year, we had 37 kids that were referred. Two of those kids moved on to 504s. Four of those kids moved on to IEPs. At least 10 of those kids were recommended by multiple teachers, so we are seeing it across classrooms that there were some issues going on with kids. And then 17 of those kids graduated out of the program, which is exactly what you want all of them to do by the time they leave us there at Root. What happens then is those kids that are left over, we move them into a mentoring program in the seventh grade. This is our second year of this program, and I'll talk a little bit about how we loop them. But last year, we had some kids recommended, and our current seventh grade is made up of this kind of setup. We have Ed Gambasini. He's a science teacher in our building. He is mentoring a group of students currently. He's got 12 students that are involved in the program. Just so you understand with the mentoring, once we identify those kids, we get in contact with their parents just so they know what's going on, because heaven forbid any parent goes, you know, "Why is my kid meeting with this man during the day? What's going on?" So we kind of give them a heads up what the program is, and a lot of times, parents are very extremely thankful that there's somebody there that's also helping at school, because I know that sometimes, especially with middle school kids, there's difficulties at home kind of making that transition and that jump. So Ed's currently got 12 kids on his, in his program this year. So he meets weekly with them. What he'll do is, he actually flexes his time. He's got a duty period, he's got his plan period and his lunch period, and he will bounce that throughout the day so he can see all of the kids necessary throughout the week, which is great. And the biggest thing this time of year for Ed is, he's just trying to build that trust, talk to the kids about their grades. And one of the biggest things is, we picked really outstanding people in the building to be positive role models for those kids. So after they build that level of trust, when that person comes to them and say, "Hey, you need to be doing this," or "Maybe you might want to try this," they're more apt to take that advice, especially from those people. And they'll meet a lot of times during recess, so it's just that opportunity to sit down with an adult and talk about things they should be doing. Eighth grade, this is Mark. Mark is in his second year of doing this. He is a eighth grade language arts teacher. Mark took those kids in the seventh grade, and he looped with them into the eighth grade. So the goal is that they have a constant mentor throughout their seventh and eighth grade years at Root. That way, they know somebody. If they have questions, they can work on those kind of things. And currently, Mark's working with nine kids in the program. Mark is a language arts teacher, so he kind of steps it up a notch. He started a book study this year with the kids. He's starting to talk about goal setting, because as I said earlier, one of the major objectives we have is to get those kids academically and socially prepared to take that next step when they go to the high school. Because of the volume of the high school, we don't want those kids to fall through the tracks. So they talk about study skills, and like I said, that transition to high school is immense. The nice thing about this, let me see if I've got another, let me go back. It's funny about Mark. Mark's a real quiet guy, but once he gets involved with these kids, he's really into what he's doing, and he's formed great relationships with these kids. These kids will bring him cookies if they're baking over the weekend, or their parents are doing this. They're always seeking him out. And I've got some quotes later that are entertaining, that the kids wrote last year, because we gave them a survey at the end of the year to kind of see how it goes, if we can make any adjustments or anything that they need differently. So another thing we added this year is, we put a caveat in here of the Learning Lab, and that is by one of our support professionals. That's Cheryl Purdy. This is her first year of doing it. And what we're doing with that is, those kids who need a little extra academic assistance, and maybe they have a study hall at a time when Mark or Ed can't meet with them, or Mel can't meet with them, so we assign them in there so they can get a little extra help throughout the day if they're missing homework, or they just need a little nudge in the right direction. One of the big things, it's also providing internet access. We put them in that room. She helps them log into Blackboard, see how they can monitor their grades, and those good things that go along with it. So Cheryl's been a tremendous asset for us, and she's doing a great job. And the nice thing about all four of those people I talked about, they jumped full in. There's no apprehension. They want to help these kids, and they want to make them better. So it's been an outstanding program for us so far. But it's not just what goes on in the school, too. We've got some other people that are involved in assisting. And we've got local business support. We reached out to Courthouse Pizza and Circles on the Square, and what they do a lot of times is, they'll provide us with gift certificates if the kids are turning in all their assignments, maybe for a quarter. Mark or Ed will hand out gift certificates to them, or they have like a monthly or a quarterly luncheon where they'll all come together and kind of talk about what's going on, and maybe have like a little wrap session. And they are great about providing some things for the kids. So I am very thankful for Courthouse Pizza and Circles on the Square. So I did include some quotes here. These are from our seventh graders transitioning into eighth. And the theme, and I'll let you read those, the theme of all of them is, they're focusing more about what's going on in the classroom and not getting themselves in situations where they're visiting us in the office. "We do like the kids, but Mrs. Weber and I would prefer they were in class as opposed to sitting in front of us." So I'll let you read those. And the kids are apprehensive. That last quote really kind of hits home with it. Those kids are apprehensive when they walk in. They maybe have never had a one-on-one relationship with a staff member or a teacher before, so they don't always see us as normal human beings. So this is a nice environment for them to get to know each other one-on-one and kind of work out some of the kinks. And then, once the kids are settled in, just like he said, you know, things get better quickly, and they know that that's a positive reinforcement for them in the building. I do want to thank those guys again for the outstanding job. With Melanie, Ed, Mark, and Cheryl, they do great things. Christie Crane and Nikki Miller are our guidance counselors, and I would love to be able to stand here and tell you this was my brainchild, but that is not accurate. Nikki Miller came to me at the beginning of last year, and she said, "You know, I got an idea. Maybe we could do something with MTSS where we start a mentoring program." And I'm all for helping the kids out, and she ran with it. And it's been outstanding, and they have meetings constantly with kids. I know Christie and Nikki will meet with Melanie almost on a daily basis to address some of the issues, and they've been instrumental in helping Ed get started in his first year and kind of feeding into what Mark needs to kind of be successful. And they work hand-in-hand with Cheryl about getting kids assigned in that particular period. So it's been a wonderful thing, you know. Every school has its issues, and we have our at-risk kids, too, and we think this program's really helping those kids stay focused, stay in class, and that's where the education happens. It doesn't happen in our office. Different kind of education, but not a good one. So does anybody have any questions?
Just commenting, and I just want to say thank you for, you know, allowing this to take place in your building, and I'm sure encouraging it. I think of these people, and I think of the students you're dealing with and their families, and I'm just really appreciative that they're going to get a little help making those transitions so they aren't afraid, or not as afraid, and they can be prepared to make the transitions and hopefully be ready in high school. I think it's fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just wanted to agree with Mr. Eastwood, but I do have a question. Is this something that's unique to Root? Is it going on at Claggett as well?
I'm not sure if Claggett's operating a mentoring program. They may have something similar, maybe formatted a little bit differently, but this is something that we kind of, brainchild came out.
Other districts using this?
Not sure.
Oh, okay.
We just, we jumped off the cliff.
Still, though, well done.
And it's these people. I would love to take all the compliments and the pats on the back, but it's those people on the board there that are the key ingredients to making this thing work.
I appreciate you sharing that with us tonight and making everyone aware of this program, and it sounds like it's working out great. So thank you for all your efforts and for your staff as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Farson. Parent Ed Camp is coming up this Wednesday, day after tomorrow. It's being held here at the high school. I'd like to encourage our parents or community members to attend that. This is the third year that we've been offering the Parent Ed Camp. We do look for feedback from all the attendees at the end of the last two years, and we are listening. We made some adjustments this year. We made sure we were offering sessions that were of particular interest to parents. We also decreased the amount of sessions so parents had an opportunity, weren't feeling like they were left out of any of the sessions. If you can come early, I believe at 5:30, there's going to be a spaghetti dinner, and that's to benefit kids first. Community Spirit Night is this Friday. This is when we have the tailgate outside of the stadium, and then we welcome our kindergartners by having them march around our field at the beginning of the game. I wanted to not only invite everybody out to this tradition, I also wanted to mention that rain or shine, it will go on. I know with the recent hurricane down in the Carolinas that's breaking apart, and the forecast, at least as of today, was for rainstorms on Friday. We will punt if we need to. It's actually a prepared punt. We've got the gym reserved, so we'll have activities and all the booths going on in the gym. Mr. Chambers and I, I think, are signed up to grill. We'll be grilling outside the senior commons, and people can eat in the commons if we need to. But hopefully, the weatherman will be incorrect. It's happened once or twice, and we'll have a beautiful day. I know we've been very lucky the last several years. Last thing I wanted to mention is, we had our first community chat last week. I believe I had brought this up during at least one of our work sessions, that we were changing the format of our community chats. And the reason why is, we're trying to roll with the times and be able to reach more parents, families, and community members. We were seeing a dramatic decrease in attendance to our Saturday morning chats. I really think it's due to multiple reasons. I think probably the biggest one is Saturday mornings are so busy for families with athletics and other activities that they have going on in the weekends that it's just difficult to fit that into their schedules. So what we did this year is, we shifted the chats to during the week. We did our first one at 10:00 in the morning. We still have the doors open for any parents or community members that want to attend, and we did have a handful of people join us last week when we did the chat. In addition to that, we are streaming them live through YouTube. We did have, I think, eight to 10 viewers viewing us live at our chat last week, so that's helping us to extend more people. During the live viewing, families, parents are able to send us in any questions or comments that they want, either directly through YouTube or through an email account that we have set up. So we want to encourage that continued interaction, and then those videos of the chats are currently posted on our district YouTube site, so anybody can go back and view it anytime they want. And I haven't checked it since the day we did it, but I think about an hour or two after we did the chat, we had about 25 or 30 views already. So we're already seeing, I think, a positive feedback from doing those online and doing it more at individuals' convenience. I do have to admit, we had a few hiccups. It's the first time we did it, so it was a little bit of experimenting through the process despite the crash course that we received going into the community chat, and I'm confident that it's going to become a little smoother as we learn a little better what we're doing. We are continuing the community chats throughout the year. The next chat, I believe, is going to be at Garfield Elementary School with Mrs. McGentee. It is on a weekday again. I don't have the date in front of me, but we will get that out, and we haven't scheduled a time yet. We're toying with doing it during the evening versus in the morning, and if that'll impact viewership or people attending. But I'm looking forward to continuing those during the year and doing everything we can to provide information to our families and be transparent. Thank you.
Yes. Must be the play in my ear. The district bank balance decreased by nearly $2.3 million in August, down to $91 million. This is $2.67 million above last year at this time. The general fund revenues were below last, below August by, or last August by nearly $750,000. The reason for this decrease was, with the valuations increasing and the tax rates reducing, you all saw decreases on your taxes because of the substitute levy and the bonds, and that accounted for most of this decrease. General fund expenditures were above last August by $1.7 million. This was spread out between personal services, benefits, and supplies, and this also relates to the strategic plan and having five pays in the current fiscal year. Sales tax balance, it was down to $3.6 million. The district spent $175,000 in the month of August, and the district received $165,000 in investment income. This was our largest investment income for, since I've been here, per, for a month, and it's a good thing. We had a total collection for the current fiscal year is approximately $14,000 above the total combined for all of 13, 14, and 15 fiscal years. So we're happy with that. Shows that the rates are increasing. We're going with the rates as we're getting CDs going through the system itself, dropping off lower rates, increasing with newer CDs. The district currently has estimated true days cash of 297 days. This is down from last August by 18.47 days and below, or I'm sorry, down from July by 18.47 days and down from last August by 12.21 days. The reason that we're going down is part of number two up there, that we're down on our revenues and we're up on our expenditures, and we also had that extra pay that we're going off of. This will occur until December roughly. So, any questions on the financials?
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Please remind me how often we receive the sales tax distribution? I see that there was a receipt in July.
It's quarterly.
Thank you.
July, October, January, and April.
Thank you.
Yes. I'd also like to talk about the permanent appropriations. You'll be looking at those for passage here during the meeting. We're looking at roughly $113 million in appropriations of that. It's an increase of roughly $5 million. The general fund increase, we're at $5.3 million itself. The main reason for that, we have increases in salaries, increases in professional service, tuition, and utility estimates. Our professional services for our emergency levy have dropped. So what might have happened is, as the directors were putting them in their budgets, we put them in the general fund and dropped them from the emergency levy, but that'll work itself out as the year goes on. We also had a $400,000 decrease in our capital grant, our sales fund, sales tax fund itself. A large portion of this was because in the summer of '17, we had a very large purchase that was going on. This year, we have a much smaller purchases going on during the summer. The large purchase is that thing that's sitting over there. It's roughly 120 yards by 50 yards, so that was being worked on at the time. If you take the encumbrances from the beginning of the '17-'18 year and subtract the encumbrances from the beginning of this year, it's roughly $418,000, which works out good because we actually gave John Burkhardt the exact same amount that we gave him last year in appropriations. Any questions on the permanent appropriations? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. Now it's time on the agenda for board communications. If anyone has anything they'd like to share.
Just a quick update. We had a facilities meeting earlier, or last week, and we were talking about some of the projects going on. The tennis courts have been, got their final coat. They're just waiting for the surface to cure before the colored base can go on. So I think that's going to happen within the next few weeks, and it'll be, it'll be nice when that is behind us and the kids can be out on there playing. I just wanted to pass that on.
The finance committee will resume their monthly meetings this month, and due to the Parent Ed Camp, September's meeting was pushed out from tomorrow until the following Wednesday, September 26th. The curriculum committee met today. Matt and Tina stated the district will begin college and career introduction and exposure beginning in the sixth grade, and it'll be worked into the curriculum on a more daily basis rather than that one- or two-day exposure that has been the case for the seventh and eighth graders, whereas the eighth graders go to the Career Center, or the Career Center comes to the seventh grade. But the teachers are going to be working it into the curriculum. Am I correct? Yes? Tina, yes. Okay. Also, to help with this endeavor, on October 10th, after the PSAT testing for the high schoolers, the high school teachers are going to be going on business tours in the area. There's a concerted effort between the district, the city, and local companies to collaborate on career planning. Jeff Harrison, Carrie Shrek, and Tina Cassidy have been very proactive in this strategic plan goal of improving college and career readiness. As part of this effort, those three have been working with Brunswick City School District. Brunswick has had a career counselor position in place for three years, and our staff members are working together with their staff to find out what's been working for them, what hasn't been working for them. So it's a really neat time as we move towards meeting that strategic plan goal.
Just wanted to update the board. Rec Center will meet Thursday, this Thursday, at 7:30, and the Partnership Council, which is a group that meets, PTOs, some city groups, and the district meets Wednesday at 9:30 at the AR root community room. And also, on your, on the agenda, you'll see we're going to approve, I think it's our first reading with policy, and I just wanted to thank Dr. Qualick. A lot of these policies are actually not, shouldn't say a lot, many of them are to keep up to date with federal and state guidelines, and I want to thank Dr. Qualick for keeping up to date on that and keeping us informed of all these changes. That takes a lot. That's why you have 180 pages that you had to read. That's why you have 180 pages that you had to read. So, took me a few days. But anyway, and then there's a couple new ones, but thank you, Dr. Qualick, for all
Thank you. Moving on to our action items from the treasurer.
If it pleased the board, it is recommended that Board of Education approve the August 18 Treasurers Report. Item number two, resolution. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the resolution of arrangement between the local government services of the Office of the Auditor of State and the Medina City School District to conduct the audit of the Medina City Schools finances for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018. I love our auditors. They are so good to us. This is just basically telling us that they're going to be here for the next six months and that the cost will be $400 more than the previous year. Resolution number three, it is recommended the Board of Education approve the resolution approval of the fiscal year 2018-19 permanent appropriations. You see your permanent appropriations there, and if you do have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them. The variance is the difference of the estimated allowable expenditures that is this year as opposed to the allowable expenditures of the prior year. So, as I say, I'm showing you at a fund-level basis. If there are any questions, happy to answer them. We then have a then-and-now purchase order. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the following then-and-now purchase order. Jostens for $6,885. This is for the yearbook at the high school. I spoke to Ms. Platts at the high school, and she said the counselor was unaware that this was occurring because they made a, if you look at the, the information provided, they made a $56,000 payment here last year, and this came out at the end of, or at the beginning of July. So it's just to true up what they were given. We had fund-to-fund transfers. It is recommended that Board of Education approve the following fund-to-fund transfers. The communications department receives donations from various, or for various purposes, and in order to keep track of these donations, they wanted to have us put them into separate funds. So this will put what they had out there into separate funds for the Spirit Night, Bicentennial, and Family First. And moving forward, all their monies will be dropped into the different funds itself. We have our Transportation Enterprise Fund. Our transportation department provides work to other school districts, and in exchange, they charge for the labor and the parts. And since we pay the transportation department's labor, we only feel it's fair that we get the payments for the labor itself. So on a yearly basis, we make this transfer back from the transportation department. And then finally, we have sales tax to our Permanent Improvement Fund. Last year, we received donations for the turf, and in our haste to go ahead and take those donations and use them, we did a reduction to expense on our portion of the turf, and it has come to my attention that those monies should not have been used as reductions, so we're placing them out there in this Permanent Improvement Fund. Thank you.
I make a motion to accept the treasurer's action items.
I'll second.
Mr. Chambers, I did want to just clarify that for the then-and-now purchase order of the Jostens yearbook, that is not district funds, correct? Because the students pay for the yearbooks? Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions regarding these action items?
I would just like to comment, just to thank Mr. Chambers for the thoroughness that he, the attention to detail that he gives us, because it's very helpful in also to continuing with the transparency to the district.
Are there any questions or comments from the public regarding these action items? Roll call, please.
Mr. Eastwood.
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik.
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Ms. Parkers.
Aye.
Thank you.
My first item up tonight for recommendation is donations. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the following donations to Medina City Schools. I do want to point out that many of these donations are for educational supplies for our students. I really want to thank our community organizations for stepping up and making sure that all of our students are prepared for the start of the school year. And it just amazes me the amount of compassion for our kids and our fellow community members here in Medina. I would also like to point out the PTOs, and I feel like a broken record with this, but they provide great financial support to our buildings, especially down at the elementary levels, helping to fund field trips and things like that that are even beyond what we provide as a school district. Also, student council, at the end of the last school year at the high school, wanted to have a direct impact on making sure that the high school is as safe of a school environment as it can be. And they are in the process of purchasing, as well as getting donations for safety materials for various classrooms. So we have several local businesses that have donated supplies to student council in order to have those safety items within the classrooms. Policies, as Mr. Ross mentioned, we've got a whole bunch of them here tonight. These are all updates to keep policies up to date. It could be simple changes and adding a comma, changing a word. I do want to emphasize that this is a first reading, so these are not being recommended for adoption. These become public once the board approves the reading. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following new and revised policies and replacement forms for a first reading. The policies and forms will not be presented to the board for final approval and potential adoption until the regular October Board of Education meeting. So that provides an opportunity for further discussion and also for the policy committee to have further review. Item number three is Medina City Schools Gifted Program. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the Medina City Schools Gifted Plan for the Identification and Service of Children Who Are Gifted for the 2018-2019 School Year. We have always had gifted policies in place. However, I think it was just last year, maybe the year before, some of the state legislation changed, and it required more specific steps for identifying gifted students, as well as how their programming is going to be received, and that that be presented to and approved by the board on an annual basis. This is a very similar plan that was presented to you last school year. Again, it's been updated. Number four is a memorandum of understanding for students placed in the Medina County Juvenile Detention Center. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the memorandums of understanding that students placed in the Medina County Juvenile Detention Center will be provided educational services by the Medina City Schools for the districts listed. And these include Black River, Brunswick, Buckeye, Cloverleaf, Highland, of course, us, and Wadsworth. These are all the Medina School District, Medina County School Districts. We're mandated by law, as are all districts, to provide academics for students, even if they are incarcerated. We serve as the home base. We provide the instructors for the correction center. They are onsite at the Juvenile Detention Center, and we have agreements with each one of the districts. We have contracts with them that they provide us the financial support for their students that are attending the Juvenile Detention Center as well. So this is regular yearly business. Field trips. We do have several field trips on the agenda this evening. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following overnight field trips in compliance with Policy 2340 for the 18-19 school year. The first one is a debate team tournament. I think I had to let you know that this one was going to be coming down the pipeline. We did need to approve one. I needed to recommend one to you at our work session, which we don't normally do, but I wanted to have it recommended before it occurred. This was one that was submitted around the same time for our debate team to go to Princeton, New Jersey. Really outstanding debate program here at Medina City Schools, and the opportunities that our students that are involved in that program get to compete against students across the country is amazing, and it's a skill that's going to carry them way beyond high school or even college. The second is a boys' basketball trip in December to Orlando, Florida. This trip has been updated, and detail has been added in regards to information behind the trip and the purpose of the trip, much as it is for leadership training. I do want to let the board know that we are in the process of reviewing our field trip forms, and one thing that we are considering is adjusting the form for a specific athletic form, because we found that some of the things on the regular academic field trip form don't necessarily apply. So that's something we'll be looking at here in the not-too-distant future and following up with you. And then the last field trip is Medina High School Orchestra Musical Experience, and they have been invited to go to Chicago to perform in March. This field trip, as well as the others, this does not come out of general fund dollars. The orchestra trip is sponsored by Friends of the Orchestra, which is the booster organization for orchestra, as well as through fundraisers and the families of students that are participating. And that's the same case for the basketball trip and the debate tournament trip as well. Number six is stipend payments. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the ACE program facilitator stipend payments. Patricia Schuck and Casey Gesick in the amount of $5,000 per facilitator to be distributed monthly at $625 each, September through April, for the 2018-2019 school year. Funds in the amount of $10,000 will be donated by the Medina City Schools Foundation to cover the costs, these facilitator, of these facilitator stipends. The ACE program is an after-school program at Claggett. It's something that was started in collaboration with the nonprofit Let's Make a Difference, the school district, and financial support through the foundation. Historically, we have had individuals that were not teachers in the building that were providing the after-school tutoring for students over at Claggett. I think we're in a very good position where our staff at Claggett has really stepped up. They know the students, that they're serving the best, and we're lucky and fortunate to have two staff members who are going to be filling in that capacity throughout this school year. And then to make it even better, we have the support of the foundation in order to help us make that happen. Number seven is an agreement with the Medina Hospital. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the agreement between the Medina City School District and Medina Hospital for its life support team to provide standby coverage for the 2018 Cross Country Festival to be held on October 6, 2018, and for the OHSAA Cross Country District Meet on October 20, 2018. I'll remind you that at our last work session, the board approved our agreement with life support through Medina Hospital for varsity athletic programs. This is an additional activity that we need the life support to provide services for us for these upcoming cross-country tournaments. Number eight is a service agreement. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following service agreement for the 2018-2019 school year, and this is Learn 21. This is specifically for the parent portal of Blackboard, the online system that many of our teachers are using. I do want to point out that it's $54,000, which sounds like a lot of money, but it's actually half, or even less than half, of what it's historically been. I do want to thank our curriculum department. I know Tina and Matt have put quite a bit of work into making adjustments, as well as Ryan, looking up the data for the use of the Blackboard. We want to be responsible with the funds that we're using from our community, and we found that the level of use at the elementary levels with Blackboard was very low. This for multiple reasons. One of the reasons is because they're on a standard-based report card, so there's less to report through the system. But we're transitioning them at the lower level. That doesn't mean we're going to give up on online access for parents, as well as lessons. We're actually in the process of transitioning our teachers to Google Classroom, which is a free service and aligns with the Chromebook adoptions and some of the other Google curriculum that we've been working on over the course of the past several years. We have not yet made a decision, but we will be looking at this at the upper-grade levels as well, with a potential transition to this new system, but that is not set in stone. If we were to do that, then there would be no cost, other than to, for training purposes for our staff. And the last item I have tonight is personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following individuals as listed, pending completion of all human resources paperwork and requirements. A couple things I do want to point out here is we're hiring another teacher. As you know, as we've discussed throughout the end of last school year and adding all-day kindergarten, that it's very difficult to predict what the enrollment's going to be like in the kindergarten programming. Very different than first grade, when we know the count of students that are going up to the next grade versus who's going to enroll new to the district as a kindergarten. Again, trying to be fiscally responsible, we took a very conservative approach, and we found that the Blake kindergarten numbers were quite high in the upper 20s. We made a commitment going into the all-day kindergarten to offer lower class sizes. Our philosophy and goal as a district is to have our lowest class sizes at the lower levels. K through 3 is really the foundational years when you're talking about reading and writing. So it's essential that those students get more individual attention with classes becoming more manageable at larger class sizes moving up. So we, I am recommending that we hire Catherine Ruby, Katie Ruby, as a kindergarten teacher over at Blake to pull those class sizes down into the lower 20s, which is comparable to the rest of the classes in the district. The other personnel item that I want to mention is, believe it or not, we have our first retirement on the agenda for recommendation. This is for Liz Mack. Liz has worked for the district since 2001. She'll retire on December 1, 2018, and she has supervised students by covering many lunch and study hall duties at Medina High School, and most recently, she's been serving our students at Claggett Middle School.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the superintendent's action items.
I'll second.
Are there any comments or questions regarding these action items from the board?
I appreciate the work that the staff has put in getting, getting our HR situation under control very much. I know this is probably getting close to winding things down and moving forward. Do we, do we know what our enrollment is now, at this point, for our kindergarten for the first, first year?
We do, and I don't know it off the top of my head. I don't know if you can throw a number out, Chris or Jim? 460, approximately.
Thank you very much.
Are there any questions or comments from the public regarding these action items? We will have time for a public comment at the end of the meeting. Hearing none. Roll, please.
Ms. Parkers.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood.
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik.
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have reached the public portion of the meeting. We do have one person in attendance who did register their intention to speak. We will have time after to allow, if anyone would like to participate, who was unable to sign up in advance. We do wish that the community members wishing to address the board abide by the following guidelines. We do wish that the community members wishing to address the Board abide by the following guidelines. Please state your name, address, and affiliation. Please keep comments to a maximum of three minutes. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic unless all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question Board members individually. I apologize if I mispronounce your name. Mr. Gumo, Gummo?
Gumo.
Gummo, thank you. If you'd like to come up to the podium, please.
All right, well, that's not me. I didn't even get up here yet. Okay, well, thank you for giving me the opportunity. My name is Paul Gummo. I reside at 4472 Brownstone Lane. And I'm here on behalf of my son, Jackson. So, and I guess starting off, I would like to request that the Board reassess and potentially amend the, the approved gifted plan that we just, that was just approved here. Historically, the Medina City Schools Gifted Plan has had two clear programs with respect to, with respect to the fifth grade program. One, there was a, a one-year accelerated program, and there was a two-year accelerated program. Both of these involved pulling out the students into a specific and dedicated classroom for those, for that classroom instruction. This year, however, we have done away with the one-year program. And we only have the two-year accelerated program. Additionally, we're introducing a brand-new math program for all of the elementary, the Bridges Math Program. This is a new program that is going to tax the teachers, is going to tax the students, and it's going to limit the amount of individual attention that can be paid and directed toward the, any of the gifted students who did not necessarily qualify for the two-year advanced program. Now, while this may be a very excellent program, those students are going to get left behind who were in the, who would have traditionally qualified for the one-year program. Teachers are going to have to spend additional time in the classroom with those students who are potentially, you know, just mastering the minimum qualifications. And they're not going to have the, the time nor attention to be able to devote to those students who are in more of a gifted program. Okay? Additionally, those students who are more gifted, they will have an opportunity to test into a higher math program later in the year, but nothing happens for this year, except for those students who were, who qualified and are in the two-year enriched math program. And what qualifies you for that program? Well, it's scoring of a 95% on the math-specific Terranova and a 128 on the general cognitive in-view testing. Now, I requested some, some reasoning behind those rigid standards and wasn't really given a, a lot of information on that. No peer-reviewed journals did state that these qualifications will best identify a student for the, the two-year gifted program. Other school districts, Highland, Brunswick, Strongsville, they have different qualifications. While they still have the high standards that we have here in Medina, some of them, you only have to meet one or two of the, of the standardized tests. You may have to get a trial program. In fact, that's what Highland offers, is offering a trial program for those students. And others take a much more subjective approach to identifying and placing those students. In fact, at Medina, if you score 100% on the math test, you will not qualify for enriched math for the two-year accelerated program at Medina, if you scored a perfect score. So, what am I requesting? And so I'm requesting that we allow students to, or that we create a program to allow students to enter the two-year gifted program on a trial basis. Put some criteria in place, but give those students who have demonstrated in their past the ability to perform at those high levels, give them that ability. Don't limit them to the, the same classroom instruction that 25, 30 other students are, are receiving at that time. So, and finally, I'd like to say that this placement, and when my wife and I were informed of this, just happened. Once the school year started, we had no idea that he was, that our son, Jackson, was not going to be, you know, in the more accelerated math program. Given that he scored a 98%, I would have thought that he may be eligible for that. But we weren't informed of anything until the school year actually started. There are remediation steps that are in place that we plan to take. But the school year's already started. We're already six weeks in. By the time any testing comes in, we're going to be two months, two and a half months into the school year. And so it really is, it puts us in a bad situation. It puts us in a situation where to put him into the next class or to put him into that accelerated program, he's going to miss two months' worth of classroom instruction. Whereas, we could have been addressing this in June. So we have, we have met with Dr. Qualick, Tina Cassidy, Shana Samoski. And we're following the, the appeal procedure that's outlined in the, in the gifted plan. But again, at this point in time, we are well into the school year and any type of remediation is going to be, is going to be substandard.
Thank you for your comments. It was my understanding there is a one-year accelerated, and...
It's, it's not a one, it's accelerated within the classroom. So they have cluster groups where they bring out some, some students, and they will place them in the same classroom. But it's still the same teacher who has to deal not only with, with these clustered students who are in the accelerated program, but with an entire classroom full of, of students as well.
Correct.
In a program that is unproven here at Medina, teachers, it's brand-new to the teachers. They're going to be struggling to just maintain that, you know, the discipline in the classroom in general, let alone be able to spend dedicated time to those, to those subpopulations of students. So...
Well, thank you for following the procedure. I believe the next step would be to reach out to our superintendent, Mr. Sable, at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify a little bit of the information, make sure everybody understood that we do still offer the one-year accelerated. You're correct, it is within the program. And it's called a workshop model, which our teachers are used to functioning out of in language arts. And it's being applied to the math program. So I don't want parents or families to think that we've had a decrease in services because we haven't. We've actually adjusted the way that we're providing services to better provide services to all of our students, of course. If you have concerns about your child's placement, I'd be more than happy to meet with you. And if you wouldn't mind just emailing me, we'll set something up.
Thank you. Are there any other attendees who wish to address the Board? Hearing none, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to move to executive session to consider the employment, discipline, and compensation of a public employee or official to consider the purchase of property for public, public purposes or the sale of property at competitive bidding if premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal, private interest is averse to the general public interest, and specialized details of security arrangements and emergency response protocols where disclosure might reveal information that could jeopardize the district's security.
I'll second that.
Ms. Parkers.
Aye.
Mr. Skidmore.
Aye.
Mr. Eastwood.
Aye.
Ms. Pavlik.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. Enjoy the rest of your evening. We will return after our executive session, but we will not take any action. Thank you.